At this time, we'd like to move to a roll call.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilwoman Dussie?
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Here.
Colleen Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chapados?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Great, thank you. As you notice, we have two councilmembers on the phone. Both of them are presently in Washington DC for a variety of reasons, and so they are participating by phone. We appreciate them doing so. Councilmembers, if there's something that you want to say and pipe in, just let me know. There is a slight delay, so we'll just deal with that as it happens. So thankful for the technology that you can be present. All right, that takes us to item 3.1. The mayor and city councils are review items on the regular city council meeting agenda. Counsel, time is yours. Anyone? Yes, Councilmember Dussie?
I'd like to, unfortunately, I forgot my notes upstairs. The last item on consent, I'd like to remove that and put it on the regular agenda.
Okay, item 9.5?
Yes.
All right, so we have item 9.5. Is there anything else on consent you'd like to see moved? Okay, so item 9.5 will move to item 10, which is the regular city council meeting agenda. All right, moving on to item 3.2, if there's nothing else. Don't see anything. The mayor and city council shall hear reports on meetings and/or conferences attended by the council. Counsel, time is yours. Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor.
Do me a tip.
I just wanted to report on the quarterly real estate roundtable that was held here at the city. I attended it. It was my first roundtable for this organization, and I found it very informative. And what was shared with them this time, as we like to educate the real estate folks within our community, was the housing study and the results of that and the outcome. It was a great conversation, and I really just wanted to encourage any additional real estate people that if you're interested in joining that roundtable discussion, I think it's definitely worth your time and energy. So I thought it was a really good event. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, councilmember. Appreciate it. Yes, Councilmember Brown?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report on the meeting I attended several weeks ago on the Colorado River Basin. I was invited to help celebrate the 50th anniversary of the signing of President Johnson and the late, great Senator Carl Hayden for the creation of the Colorado River Basin, or as we know as CAP, Central Arizona Project. That was a marvelous experience. That project took many, many years with a lot of help. In addition to Senator Hayden, there was Congressman John Rhodes, both the Udals, Mo Udall and Stu Udall. Stuart Udall later became Secretary of Interior, and he was at that signing September 30, 1968. Marvelous experience. That facility out there is just fantastic. The celebration itself was wonderful, to meet with other people who were involved with water and CAP. To go through that machine shop, which is as large as a football field, is just incredible. They can lift any kind of machine you can imagine. And then to go over to the control center, which is like Cape Canaveral. That was a great experience. And to see they can pump 336 miles of water from Lake Mead up the hill, all through Phoenix, all the way down to Tucson. Marvelous experience. And of course, it's critical now because we are living in a time of drought, which is getting worse in Arizona. So it's going to be very prudent on our leaders and each municipality to do all they can to conserve water. Because if that Lake Mead drops to 1075, which it probably will next year, Secretary of Interior will have to call us some emergencies. If it drops second tier, it'll be more difficult. If it drops third tier, 1025, then we're in trouble. And they expect that might occur by 2026. So let's hope that does not occur. Let's hope we get a lot of rain. But it does likely because we're in a serious drought in this state, as well as most of southwest United States. That's my report.
Thank you, councilmember. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Dussie?
I thought he...
Councilmember Wade, did you have something?
On Saturday, the City of Maricopa started their celebration for Hispanic Heritage Month by having their Chihuahua races and car show. And I think that's what Councilmember Wade was going to speak on.
Councilmember Wade?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was a little corrected. Did I add with 3.2 that corrects my non-meeting and conferences?
That's correct.
Okay. I attended the Arizona Business Council, OAS 01, the 7th. We were treated with briefings on ATS, F Port, utilities, Goldwater, and also Sky Harbor. One of the things that F Port mentioned is that they would be managing, as we all know, they'll be managing the county utilities, so they mentioned that. They were very favorable to the relationship between the City of Maricopa and the organization, even to the point of suggesting that we were one of a very small group of cities that were very happy to participate in each other because of our relationship. I attended a coffee with the chief on the 8th, playing a zone meeting on the 11th, February 10th, September 11th, more concerned about the copper strike. On the 12th, the Tennessee M S D swimboard meeting, where it was about to facilitate the community to act as who would be holding a joint meeting with M S D and the city council on the 16th of October. I attended one, the W meeting, number 13, the Homecoming Vampire. Also had an opportunity to speak to voice talk show, number 993, with a few words. So that was a busy day. And then finally attended the kids' day on the 15th, and the Chihuahua Festival, which was always, that's always a very, it was the second event, great last time, it would be better this time, with the Chihuahuas in the community. They rock different groups, and opportunities for kids to have fun, some booths, and then they had classic car display as well. So I'm not sure if that family cars were part of the meeting, but it went quite well. That's all I have to report.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Councilwoman Dussie?
In all, I wanted to report that this afternoon, the Central Arizona College held their monthly board meeting, and it was held here in Maricopa. And I was surprised that I didn't see more, I guess I wasn't surprised, that I didn't see more Maricopa residents there. But they are aggressively recruiting, retaining, and graduating more and more Maricopa students. And the campus is there, and I think all the community members should take advantage of the fact that we have a community college here in Maricopa. But the board meeting went well, and it was very informative.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. That'll take us to item 3.3. The mayor and city council's here presentation on proposed changes to the city code, Chapter 3, Administration, stands for discussion and direction. Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Price, members of the council. This presentation is to provide the council with an overview of the proposed changes to Chapter 3, Administration, of the city code relating to the acting city manager appointment, city manager purchasing and contracting limits, delegation of authority regarding those limits, and Article 4 of Chapter 3 relating to purchasing and decentralization of city purchasing. One of the first tasks given to city manager Horst was to evaluate the effectiveness of our current centralized purchasing system. The proposal before you today is a result of this evaluation. A user committee was formed, and all departments took part in a team approach to seeking a more effective and efficient decentralized purchasing system. It continues, "All required checks and balances is set forth by law and best practice provisions." Under a decentralized purchasing program, supplies are purchased by each department on demand and meet immediate and long-term needs. Department directors are in the best position to understand the needs of the department. While a significant portion of the changes to Chapter 3 were for purchasing, there are a couple other sections in which changes are being proposed as well. Okay, we're not moving. The proposed changes to Section 3-20 are to allow city manager Horst to appoint an acting city manager. In the event the city manager is unable to designate and until council appoints an interim city manager, his powers and duties shall be performed by the administrative services director and the city clerk. They are so appointed in order, and as each succeeding officer may be absent or disabled. Section 3-24 of the city code provides for the authority to contract and allow city manager Horst to delegate to department directors contracting authority to bind the city for all legal purposes to execute contracts in amounts $25,000 or less, provided the costs of those agreements are authorized in the current council-approved budget. Even though the city manager may delegate the authority to contract, all contracts will continue to go through the city attorney prior to execution. This delegation also includes the authorization of applications and all necessary paperwork to apply for grant funds on behalf of the city. However, this does not include the delegation of the acceptance of the grant, should the city be awarded the grant. The City of Maricopa Purchasing Code is included in Chapter 3 of the Administration of the City Code and is Article 4. While purchasing for the City of Maricopa may not be rocket science, the quote by John Glenn, "As I hurtled through space, one thought kept crossing my mind, every part of this capsule was supplied by the lowest bidder," can be applied to City of Maricopa purchasing. The best value may not be the lowest cost. Why are purchasing rules necessary? Purchasing rules are necessary first and foremost. It is always necessary to remember, the city is charged with the task to use taxpayer funds in the most efficient and economical way possible. Is the city ensuring we are getting the best value for the goods and services that we are receiving? There are local, state, and federal laws and regulations that must be followed, and this would include ensuring that goods and services are purchased through a fair and competitive process. The proposal before you is that the city move to a decentralized purchasing structure that will allow the department directors to have more control of purchasing the necessary supplies to meet the immediate and long-term needs of the department. City manager Horst will make the delegation to department directors for purchasing and As I previously mentioned, purchasing processes are defined by specific federal law, the Arizona Procurement Code, and the Maricopa Purchasing Code. In addition, there may be specific requirements that have to be met as part of grant agreements. There are times when departments will have to evaluate which agency holds the authority for a purchase. For example, a grant may require purchases in excess of $5,000 to obtain written quotes, and the proposed city code changes do not require written quotes until the purchase exceeds $10,000. The department would still be required to obtain three written quotes per the grant When is council approval required? Council approval must be obtained prior to the purchase being made or contract being signed if there is another section of the code that requires approval by council, and where the purchase of the goods or services and/or funds are not provided in the budget and the purchases in excess of $50,000. So the proposed changes in Section 3-213 are to have items under $10,000 that departments can order those items as needed without further formality. Items $10,000 to $50,000, three written quotes would need to be obtained. In excess of $50,000, formal solicitations are required in accordance with Section 3-215 of the code. Any contracts, again, executed at any of the three levels would still be required to go through legal prior to being executed. The cumulative annual purchases section of the code was deleted, as the other sections that are now granting the city manager and/or department directors purchasing and contracting authority will cover the intent of the previous section, and items in excess of $50,000 that were not included, and the funds were not included in the budget, would still be required to be brought forth to council for approval. Okay, let's see if I can walk you through a scenario with this flowchart without it getting too confusing. The first question you have to ask in the upper left, is the project or purchase approved, the item or the project to be purchased approved in the budget? If not, is the budget in excess, is the budget less than $50,000? If you answer no to both of these questions, you travel down the flowchart on the left-hand side, and it indicates the item must go to council for budgetary transfer and/or approval of the item or project to be purchased. You follow the flowchart down to the bottom and around the far right side up to where the cost is, and ask the question of, is the cost greater than $50,000? And in the scenario we just had, it would be, so it would have to go to formal bid or cooperative agreement, and then to council approval if it was not already approved as an item and the funds appropriated within the council-approved budget. If you answer yes to the question, was the item or project approved in the budget in the upper left-hand corner, you would move to the right, and you would determine whether it's a requisition or is a credit card. So the next question down would be, is it less than $10,000? If the answer is yes, then you move down and you go ahead and initiate a purchase requisition, turning it into a purchase order, or you purchase the item on a purchasing card and the order is placed. If you answer no, you move across to the right and you ask if the cost is between $10,000 and $50,000. If the answer is yes, you move down to three written quotes and/or cooperative agreement, and then on to a purchase order when you've received those items or have the agreement. If it is in excess of $50,000, then you go back to the decision of formal bid or co-op, back to council approval if it's not already approved in the budget. There are multiple ways that you can make a purchase. You can enter a purchase requisition to obtain a purchase order to be generated and sent to the vendor to initiate the purchase. Upon delivery, the vendor will invoice the city for payment. A purchase can be made on the city credit card, as long as the purchase meets the single purchase limit, which currently is $2,500 without prior approval of the city manager, and the purchase does not exceed the individual cardholder's limit. Credit card purchasing policies and limits may change in the future as an evaluation is performed as to moving the city from a credit card to a purchasing card, which will allow for electronic processing and electronic approval of P-card transactions. Check requests are used for payments of items such as dues, memberships, subscriptions, and items that the city has received the item and an invoice has been received prior to a purchase requisition or purchase order being initiated. Employee reimbursements can be used for purchases that meet the necessary purchasing requirements and have department director approval. This should not be used to circumvent any of the purchasing policies and/or individual credit card purchase limits. Section 3-214 is the exclusive service, which is often also referred to as a sole-source procurement. This section is being updated to include not only single providers that have unique characteristics, but also add the clarification that unique historical institutional knowledge and experience which provides for continuity of service. An example of this would be munis or legisart. It would not be practical to provide continuity of service, efficiency, or cost-effectiveness to potentially award these contracts to other vendors every three to five years. Section 3-218 was updated to include additional guidance and clarity as to the definition of when an emergency exists. Local preference in Section 3-221 was modified to delete the requirement that a business be located in the City of Maricopa for six months. One change that I would like to propose to the information on this slide is to remove the third bulleted item. Purchases under $5,000, the vendor would be given a credit of 5%. Should the council, at a council meeting in the future, approve the recommended changes to the purchasing limits, the city will not require quotes for items under $5,000. Therefore, there would be no way to give a 5% credit to a vendor for their local preference. The proposed change, in turn, would change the amount in the fourth bulleted item to be $10,000 instead of $5,000. So it would be purchases between $10,000 and $50,000, the vendor would be given a credit of 1%. There were other minor wording changes within Chapter 3 that were included in the redline version of Chapter 3 that was provided to council, such as the clarification in 3-251 for amounts received for property sold being deposited in the general fund or other funds so designated by the purchasing director. One situation in which the monies would need to be deposited in a fund other than the general fund would be when equipment was purchased with grant or HERF monies. In this instance, the items must be sold or disposed of in accordance with the grant agreement or HERF requirements, and funds would need to be either returned to the grant or agency or used in accordance with the grant agreement or HERF stipulations. The next steps that we have in front of us, the policies and procedures will be written to facilitate the implementation of the decentralized purchasing function and institute the new purchasing limits when they are approved. As part of the policies and procedures, one of the things that would be incumbent upon us to include would be ethics and purchasing guidelines to ensure and encourage competition, prevent favoritism, obtaining the best value in the interest of the city and the public, placing professional responsibilities above personal interests, ensure fair competitive access to city procurement opportunities, use information gained confidentially in the performance of city duties solely in the city's interest, disclose any potential conflict of interest to their supervisor and the purchasing director, to recuse themselves from any specific procurement for which they have a conflict of interest, report corruption and unethical practices whenever and wherever discovered to the appropriate official, and take action as warranted in the situation. It is anticipated, pending the council discussion and direction this evening, that the resolution in accordance adopting the changes to Chapter 3 Administration of the City Code will be brought to council for approval October 2, 2018. I can answer any questions. I have Jennifer here to help.
Will you go back to 218, that first bullet, 218?
Slide 218?
Yeah.
Oops, too far.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, and which bullet?
All right, thank you.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, got it. Councilmember Smith?
If we would go back to the flowchart, in the very first diamond, where it indicates project purchase in the budget or not in the budget but less than $50,000, if you follow that yes path, then I am just curious where the money comes from if it's not in the budget. Because if it's contingency, I certainly want council approval, and that's not in the yes path.
The, when you're asking the second time, if the project purchase is in the budget, then you move to the right?
Right.
Where you're not looking for if it's under $50,000.
Perhaps I could help answer that?
Yes, thank you.
I think I understand your question. At the end of the day, I have no authority to spend outside of the total budget, but I do have the authority to transfer funds within budgets. So if we find a less need to fulfill a greater need, that's how we would do that.
Yeah, and I'm...
But I have no authority to overspend the totality of the budget.
And I'm fine with that. I just want clarification that if it was under $50,000 but not in the budget, this flowchart doesn't have any way to handle contingency, and so if there is a need for contingency...
This wouldn't be a contingency-type thing.
Okay.
I would like to have a discussion with you about contingencies at a later date. That's another topic, to shore up policies, procedures, and how we use that. But the intent would be, it would be fund transfers within the, I don't have the authority to spend the contingency unless you approve it.
Very good. I just wanted to know, so if it's under 50, you would kind of deviate from the flow, and you needed contingency, you'd follow the no flow?
Right now, if I need to spend money at the contingency, I need to come back to you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
But like I said, I would like to address how we handle contingency, but at a later date.
Yep. And then in Section 3 dot 20, although I want the city manager right now to stay for 20 years, I would like, we don't know exactly how long we'll have a his as the city manager, so I'd like to change the his to city manager so that it's non-gender.
Very appropriate.
And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else? Okay, I don't hear anyone, so, good. Any further discussion, counsel, on this? I think it makes sense, I just wanted to hear the city manager say a little brief bit about the efficiencies that they're hoping to gain from this.
Well, and it may be helpful to line up the department heads. You know, in essence, you know, our purchasing staff under the existing system work very hard. They're very diligent, but they're now trying to handle the workload of the entire city with roughly two people. Plus, they're not the subject matter experts on a lot of the topics when it comes to a particular engine size, or a pump, or this, or that, or the other. And remember, at the end of the day, we hold the department heads accountable for the exercise of their budgets, and so they need to be able to control that. So it's a matter of saving time. Under this system, we will now decentralize, so we have a number of people who will be able to take care of the needs of the city in a much quicker fashion. I've kind of coined a phrase that some of the staff likes. I said, "We don't want to spend a dollar trying to save a nickel." And I think that's part of the process that we want to go through. Now, to be clear, we still have the checks and balances, and by the way, our purchasing staff is quickly evolving to other needs, fulfilling those needs, and there will be no changes for staffing, other than they will fill some empty voids and fill some holes that need to be done, so.
Perfect, thank you very much. Again, any further questions? Okay, I think that finishes that. We appreciate the report and the suggestions, so I don't think, not hearing anything further, then I will...
Who's there?
Oh, there's one. Councilmember Wade?
Yeah, I hope I'm not repeating something that's always taken sometimes when I'm missing parts of this, but I had a question in reference to Section 3-20, the acting city manager. Is this, and I don't know if we've missed it...
Is this, and I don't know if we've identified this, would it be, would it be practical to establish some dates to that, or some timeframe to that? It's been 30 days, 20 days after hesitation, something along those lines, so the bits just won't carry on until we come to the decision that we have to make.
Thank you, Councilmember Wade. City Manager Horst.
I think that's a very good question. The intent is if I'm out on vacation, I would be able to have the authority to appoint one of the department heads. Part of that would be so I could actually rotate it around to, you know, training and other opportunities for city managers. I think if we wanted to put something on it, you know, two to three weeks as a max, you know, I can't, I've never taken a two-week vacation, so I don't know, but maybe I'll get sick for two weeks or something. But, you know, if I'm incapacitated, then it falls back to the council to do that. But if you're comfortable having a date on it, I would probably ask 30 days, but if you want to do two weeks, I could live with that because, but the key is, you know, truth is, city manager's never off duty. So, but we need someone here to handle the day-to-day affairs of the city in my absence. And I do want the desire to rotate it among my department heads, you know, to expand their abilities and skill sets and so forth. So if you like a timeframe in, I would recommend 30 days, but if you like less, let us know.
Okay. Okay, we're going to shoot over to Legal here.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wade, I think it provides for that because it talks about, in the event of an absence, the city manager shall appoint an acting city manager. So we have that, he has the right to do that. And then it says, "In the event the city manager unable to designate and until council appoints an interim city manager." So I think if for something happened and the city manager thought he was only going to be out for a week and he appointed somebody, he has the right to do that. And then if it went longer than that, council wanted to appoint somebody else, council has the right to do that, too. We can put timelines on it if you want, but I think there's a lot of flexibility what's there now.
I think Councilmember Wade, for instance, if I was to take the full FMLA leave, which is, you know, longer than what you might expect, you may want to step in. But I think, what our attorney is saying, though, I think you can step in anytime you want.
Yeah, personally, I think I'd be more comfortable with the flexibility there. So I agree with where you were going, Councilmember Wade, on the timeline, but I think that ultimately the timeline is such that it's a flexible timeline, dealing with the situations that may arise. And so I'd like to see that we keep that flexibility personally.
Yeah, the old policy said the first in line would be the assistant city manager. And of course, we don't have an assistant city manager, so.
Right. So that makes sense. Okay. Any further questions?
I don't have any others. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no...
No questions here.
Thank you, Councilmember Manfredi. Seeing no other questions, we will go ahead and move this forward. We'll see this on a future council agenda item. And as such, we are finished. Council, we don't have any, we don't have any e-sessions today, but we do have a presentation going on out there in the foyer, and that will also move back in here as we move towards the Hispanic celebration, Hispanic month celebration. So we'll do that at 7:00. But with that, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
A second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we will reconvene at 7:00.
I'll call you back.